That's it. Calling the order for this regular town council meeting, Madam Clerk, may I please have a roll? Can we do it in a lower tone? Yes. Excuse, yes.
Here.
Here. Okay. Okay. All right. Would you all please stand and you have?
I congratulate you to have our county that's made from America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir. We have um the additions of orders two twenty seven, two twenty eight, two twenty nine, and two thirty. Also, there's a typo in one that we will address when we get there.
Thank you.
My fault.
Looking for approval of the minutes for the May twenty third, two thousand and twenty four regular council meeting, public hearing, and the September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty four special executive session. Motion made by Council of the May, second by Council of Palate, or any council discussion? Public. Back to the council, all in favor? It's unanimous. See, we have no special presentations. We will move right to the managers.
Fantastic. Um, so I'm gonna do a brief overview, very brief. Uh, there's a lot of great, what do you want more? Uh, it's just Michael Walsh. Yep, um. The Milonoket Memorial Library has once again arranged a meet the candidates night in preparation for the upcoming election. Um, that will be held October sixteenth from six to eight P M. at the library. Uh, streaming will be available on Zoom. Um, however, if folks plan to participate, um, what the flyer directs is that they need to um attend in person. Um, and the event flyer is attached uh to my report, also um published on all social media accounts and and out there in the public. Uh, the elevator modernization is tentatively uh set to begin at the end of October. Uh, councilors are aware of some additional uh electrical and uh safety upgrades that are pertinent that that came about during the site visit, so we will need to address that uh in one of the two coming meetings before that. Uh, we're still working on a list of um materials and installation costs uh involved with that. Uh, paving is done. All done. Paving's done for the year. Uh, again, we spent about half a million dollars on paving this year. That was more uh than the town had seen in a very, very long time. Um, it's unfortunate that the cost of paving at this point has uh led that to be less impactful than one would think, but we're still pretty happy with the amount of paving we were able to get done. Um, culvert and bridge replacement over uh connecting um Iron Bridge Road area um is in full swing. That should be wrapping up in the next couple of weeks. Um gonna start doing some cleanup at the cemetery. The Public Works Cemetery Crew will be doing all of the cleanup over there, including all the decorations um around on or around October fifteenth, so uh we are trying to get that message out to the community and the the people who place decorations over there. You know, if you'd like to keep them, um, please go over there and and um take care of those. The site plan review and public hearing for the um hospitals, emergency room expansion project uh will take place with the planning board next Thursday, August third at six thirty in this room. Those wanting to pay attention, that would be a good opportunity to join us. Yeah, with the upcoming election, the absentee ballots are expected to be available October fourth. Um, requests uh for those applications are now available in person, online, by telephone, the website, or by mail request. Um, Town Council has two seats open for three-year terms. Um, those seats are Mador and McGlaughlin. F seven McGlaughlin, thank you. Um. Ha, the candidates for Town Council are Matthew Braggan, Timber, Tammy Craig, uh Tammy McGlaughlin, and Gilda Stratton. For school board, there is one seat up for grabs. Um, it is currently held by Mr. Warren Stewart. Um, the candidates on the ballot are Warren Stewart and Rachel Seer. However, um, we understand that Warren Stewart has expressed um that he would like not to be on the ballot. However, um, you know, the way the government runs, um, it is too late to do that, so um you know, he's trying to spread the word that that he would not wish to continue running for school board, so I am relaying that message. Um, let's see, fire department. Engine seven eighty-one um completed and failed the pump test as we expected. Um, Chief Cody, myself, and our community initiatives director um are working diligently to uh plan for the replacement of that apparatus. We are um seeking funds through um the Payment of Taxes Program uh through the Pop Scott County Commissioners, um as well as exploring um financing options as not to uh write one big check as would be pretty irresponsible at this point. So um, that purchase, we feel very strongly needs to take place before the end of this calendar year, um, and we will keep everybody updated. Uh, we think we have some pretty affordable options ahead of us. Oh, the department has been trained on the new Lucas device, so that's good to go. Huge impact on the department. The, you know, while back last winter, I think we talked about the uh banana boat, the inflatable boat for uh open water rescues. Um, you know, we, the the cost of the new ambulance came in at such an attractive price, we were able to absorb that purchase. It is now here. Um, and the training for that equipment will take place in November. Um, also, the new S C B As we talked about recently um have been ordered, and we are awaiting those to arrive and be placed in service. The Milonoket Memorial Library uh report is attached. Um, I did speak with the M P D. There was um nothing of any substance to really uh expand on their last visit with us, so um they did not provide um a report this time. Um, and then back to the library, Diana Furukawa will be joining us on October twenty-fourth to give the library's quarterly presentation to the council. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Any question, comments from the manager's report? I'd just like to take this up, wish candidates to be paid, candidate, like, uh certainly, thank for their uh, uh. How easy sometimes to put yourself out there, but I appreciate and thanks to all the can uh down the public, any man, any comment on the man? Being none, move on. All right, order one eight, order two eighteen dash twenty twenty-four, providing for execution of the town warrant for September twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. It is ordered town warrant for September twenty-six, twenty twenty-four in the amount of three hundred seventy-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars is hereby approved. Made by Chair Mador, second by Council of the May. Uh hitters on this one, we have a nineteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars, seventy-two cents to oil tender. That is for our taxiway uh corridor and engineering. Uh, twenty-one thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars, fourteen cents to municipal association, that of course, top. Seventeen thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars, seventy-three cents, Resource Recovery Association, that is forty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents, Main Water Company, and that is us being at our fire height. Eleven thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars, fourteen cents uh to Radio Communications Management, Inc., that is radio apparatus for the ambulance. Uh, sixteen thousand, forty-four dollars, eighty-three cents, T Bahar Engineers Incorporated, that is up the bridge uh uh bridge and you have a big one, two hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty cents to the town beautiful market. That is our payment on the lease contract. And twelve thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars and ninety-four cents, person power for assorted power charging for our own town. Any comment on your order?
Just, you know how I love to clarify things. Um, that C V and Mar bill would have been related to Brownfield's work.
Groundwork, thank you. Anyone else? Down to the public. Back to the council, all those in favor? Council of Palate, can I please get your read order two nineteen dash twenty twenty-four? Motion made by Council of Palate, second by Council of the May, any hitters on that one, public? Any comment on your? Down to the public. Back to councils in favor? You know. Council of Mackin, can I please get you to read order one two twenty dash twenty twenty-four?
Order number two twenty dash twenty twenty-four, providing for approval of an event application for malt, vineyard, and spirituous liquor license for Boreal Theater. It is ordered that the Milonoket Town Council approves the attached application for malt, vineyard, and spirituous liquor license is here to approve for Randy D. Jackson Business Address, two fifteen Penob Scott Avenue, Milonoket, doing business as Boreal Theater, two fifteen Penob Scott Avenue, Milonoket.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Mackin, second by Council McGlaughlin, any council comment on? Down the public. The council, all those in favor? Council McGlaughlin, can I please get your read order two twenty-one dash twenty?
Certainly. Order number two twenty-one dash twenty twenty-four, providing for approval of street closures for Halloween festivities. Whereas Halloween is a little over a month away, and street closures for several community events and activities are important for the safety of of our community members. It is ordered that the Milonoket Town Council authorizes the street closures listed below for Halloween festivities on October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Massachusetts Avenue from Heritage Drive to New Jersey Street from four to six P M. Independence Lane at Massachusetts Avenue intersection from four to six P M. Arustic Avenue from Summer Street to Central Street from four to six P M. Lower end of Westwood Avenue, next to the Nazarene Church, from four to six P M.
Motion made by Council McGlaughlin, second by Council of the May, any council discussion on the order? Being done down the public? Back to the council, all in favor? It's unanimous. Council of the May, can I please get you to read order two twenty-two dash twenty twenty-four?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Order number two 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 dash twenty twenty-four, providing for award of wastewater plow truck bid, whereas a bid opening for this purchase was held on September nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, where four bids were reviewed. Is ordered that Milonoket Town Council at the recommendation of wastewater chief operator and town manager award this bid to Caden Motors of Milonoket for the amount of fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars. Did you see one Caden Motors, fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars, two Varney G M C, fifty-nine thousand, forty-six dollars. Cork Ford, supposed to read sixty thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty cents. Four Darlings Ford, sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Motion made by Council of the May, second by Council McGlaughlin. Uh, this was the investment you were talking about as far as
dollar.
Yep, typo, yeah. Uh, any council discussion on the order? Down the public. Back to council, all in favor? Thank you very much.
And did you catch that? Yep.
Again, I'm going back, Council McGlaughlin, can I please ask you to read two, order two two three dash twenty twenty-four?
Certainly.
All right.
Order number two twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four, providing for approval to carry forward F Y twenty-four unspent general fund budget items. It is ordered that the Milonoket Town Council approves the carry forward of six hundred fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-one cents for the following unspent F Y twenty-four budget items.
Mr. Chairman, could we uh motion to provoke the rest of the reading of this order?
Sure, may if we have a second. Council of Palate is ready. All right, uh, all those in favor of foregoing the remainder of reading of the order? Unanimous. All right, so, Council, you're off.
Thank you.
Motion, I'm still looking for somebody to second the original. Oh, I'll motion to waive, I'll waive the rest of the reading.
I'll second the order two two three.
Thank you. Motion made by Council Wong, second by Council May on order two two three. Any council discussion on? Down the public. Back to council, all in favor? You know, thank you. Council of the May, may I ask, read order two four dash twenty twenty-four?
Absolutely. Order number two two four dash twenty twenty-four, providing for approval to carry forward F Y twenty-four unspent wastewater budgeted items. It is ordered the Milonoket Town Council approves the carry forward of seven hundred eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars, ninety-seven cents for the following unspent F Y twenty-four wastewater budgeted item.
Uh hold me just a second, Council of the May. I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to well, uh, Council Palate has a second on motion to waive. As for the council vote, all those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. How in the original order, uh, order four dash twenty twenty-four, do I have a second for that one? Council Palate is second to that one as well. Any council discussion on? Being done down the public. Back to the council, all in favor? It's unanimous. Council Palate, can I please ask you to read order two two five dash twenty twenty-four?
Second.
Made by Council Palate, second by Council McGlaughlin, council discussion on the order. Get it? Uh, geez, I'm gonna
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ready to get this thing through here?
Um, not that it's a huge deal, but just because there's no backup information, uh, we have an explanation of why this needs to be swapped over from
Yeah, the um administration postage due to the, you know, cost increase and the, you know, various um certified mailings and things that increased increased over the year um is overspent um in the F Y twenty four budget um with this you know, additional um postage funding available transferred over there, that department then becomes um flush, and we're all in good standing, so pretty easy transfer.
Other discussion on the order? Down to the public. Back, council, all in favor? Right. Council of the May, can I ask you to read order two six dash twenty twenty-four?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. Order number two two six dash twenty twenty-four, providing for order of Public Works, one ton dump with file bid, whereas a bid opening for this purchase was held on September eighteen, twenty twenty-four, where two bids were reviewed, and whereas this is the second round of bidding on this equipment purchase, which was a prior year budgeted item, with the understanding of councils that the above, the original budget item would be considered for the assigned fund balance, is ordered that Milonoket Town Council at the recommendation of Public Works Director and Town Manager award this bid to Caden Motors of Milonoket for the amount of seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars. It is further ordered that the Milonoket Town Council approves the additional fourteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars needed to complete the purchase be allocated from the unassigned fund balance. Bids received, one, Caden Motors, seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars, two, Thorke Brothers, that ninety-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Motion made by Council of the May, second by Council Palate, here, any council discussion on? Nothing to keep any and down the public. None back to the council, all those in favor? Now. Council of Mackin, can I please get you to read order two two seven dash twenty twenty-four?
Order two two seven dash twenty twenty-four, providing for commitment of F Y twenty-five property taxes. It is ordered that the fiscal year twenty twenty-five property taxes be committed, and the due date for the first half payment is thirty days after the commitment date.
Second. Motion made by Council Mackin, second by Council May, any council discussion on the order? I know how much this is everybody's favorite time of the year, but uh the necessary, necessary thing for the community. Seeing no council, down to the public. Back to council, all in favor? It's unanimous. Order two two eight dash twenty twenty-four, providing for setting the no rate for F Y twenty twenty-five. It is ordered that the Milonoket Town Council set F Y twenty-five no rate at twenty-seven dollars and sixty cents. Second. Motion made by Chair Mador, second by Council of the May. Any council discussion on this? Ken, I know I'm asking, but fact that the no rate, I think, is going to be a little bit of discussion that's open. I asked the town assessor to please come up.
And I was uh but it's supposed to go in with the tax bill this year to give a little bit of an explanation.
Thank you.
So this year, you did need to adjust valuations again, to twenty-five percent building valuation adjustment across the board. Others, I'm sure. Uh, so these sales here show a couple of things. Um, the first section that outlines street addresses, dates, and a sale price. Those properties have sold multiple times in the last few years, and you can see that our market is still increasing. The bottom uh set of numbers shows the sales that we received in September of twenty-four, the ones that I've been notified for so far. The assessed value is with the twenty-five percent increase in buildings. So it's still outpacing us.
Dramatically.
Yes, yes. Um, any questions on any of those numbers? So, want to make sure that people understand that this twenty-five percent adjustment has nothing to do with the people that are visiting your homes or the reevaluation that we're going to do. That will take effect for next year. You know, there's been a little bit of discussion and confusion on that. Um, and in reference to the revaluation, they have finished up uh just about all of the old section of town. And uh we have taken the information that they have done to the people that are going to do the data entry for us, so we're moving along. Um, they'll be hopefully finished with inspections uh by the end of this year or or early spring next year, um as they move into the new development area.
Regardless of neighborhood, whatever, assuming it, this one is just a twenty-five percent across
Across the board.
Let everybody know that this equitable, I mean, everybody's own, nobody's or less or whatever.
There are a few properties that I have visited that are blight or have problems. Um, those did not necessarily receive the full twenty-five percent because it wasn't justified if they
Bless you.
Bless you. Would have exceeded market value. There's only a handful of of those ones.
Any councilists have any questions? Council. Any comments from the public on what you see here as far as this explains what's gonna happen now? This twenty-five percent is gonna take effect in this tax bill.
Yep, your, your valuations have increased.
Can I just ask where we keep up with the twenty-five percent?
So, looking at the market, so they come in, the state audits me every year. It's basically two years behind when they audit me of sales. By the time we get the sales information and the state gets the sales information, the audit that I have is usually two years back on sales. They compare my assessed value to the sale prices of homes that are occurring, and they give me a percent of market value that I am assessing. We had slipped to sixty-odd percent, which is not uncommon. Most communities in Maine are facing the same problems that we are uh with substantial adjustments, but the market just keeps outpacing us. So we did an analysis on the sales that were used, and that percentage brought us back into compliance for sales that happened two years ago.
Okay.
So we'll do that every year, and hopefully at some point the market settles, and I won't have to do as much math.
Anybody else in the council, council?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to, uh, there's been a lot of articles that, you know, Lincoln got paper as recently. So you're actually correct where if you read these articles, um, Lincoln's going through the same thing, East Market, that way's going through the same thing, if not a year or two behind us, so they will be facing the same thing. So I think it's I know it's going to, uh, this has been a long time coming. This is just a footballing, um, but it's better But it's better to be ahead of I don't want to say we're ahead of the game because we're just catching up. But other communities are going to be feeling the same bill rate increase, but taxes increase on the property though, so
Tax valuation.
Tax valuation.
Related to the mill rate.
And it's a building, this is a building adjustment, we didn't adjust land.
Just wanted to make it known that anybody reading the local papers that several communities are going through this process are finding the same result, so, thank you.
If I'm not mistaken, there, it will eventually be penalty from state. It's up as far as how much funding we then see.
There are things that are tied to it, absolutely, yeah. And then also your homestead exemption would be reduced, so if we were at sixty two percent, you would only get sixty two percent of that twenty five thousand dollar homestead valuation. And we would also apply that number to the personal property aspect of it, so whatever, say shop and save reported to me for personal property, I would have to adjust that by the sixty two percent. So there's just a whole lot of very good reasons to do our due diligence and try to keep pace with the market.
Want to get that out? Any other counsel?
I don't know that it's going to be triple, but you are going to be in a different situation because your taxes were frozen last year, so your tax comparison is from this year back two years, so yes, it's going to be painful, that wasn't in retrospect totally helpful to people.
Yeah, so we have to make up for what we didn't pay last year. We've got issues, point five percent, plus I can't remember what the mill rate was last year.
Twenty eight, twenty.
Oh, good, so it went down.
Welcome.
Anybody else in public? None. All right, so, on order
Do you want to discuss a little bit more about what happened as far as other valuation? Okay, so we also saw some fruition at the former mill site. This year, the solar farm was located there, it was not up and running nor connected to the grid for this year. So in, when it is, when solar projects are connected to the grid, the state has them as exempt properties and they reimburse us at fifty percent of whatever that asset is valued at. So when they're not connected to the grid, they go under what is called the state business equipment tax exemption. And that is what this solar site will be under for this year and the next year it will be totally exempt. So they reported seventeen million dollars worth of construction costs up there, some of which do not qualify for the Betty Program. I am waiting for some confirmation from them on a couple of items, it will not be taxed at that amount because some of it, they had sales tax, they had other things in there that weren't applicable connections, et cetera. So we did see an increase, probably a little over a hundred thousand dollars in taxes that will be reimbursed to us from the state through the Betty Program. And I know that's a lot of acronyms, so I apologize for that. But we are seeing some fruition at the mill site, which is welcome. The other part of it was the actual budget and and commitment process. Our county tax went up by fifty thousand this year. The municipal appropriation went down by about a hundred and twenty seven thousand. The local school appropriation went up by about six hundred and fifty eight thousand, so that's where we've come. Even though the valuation went up, the mill rate didn't decline as much as we maybe would have hoped because of the other factors involved in it.
I would like to remind everybody too that full budget increase in the full budget passed by each school board, council and public. Went right through the system for that increase. I just want to let everybody know that this was one thing, council thing or whatever. The free prom for the increases. Anybody else have it? All those in favor, order two two eight dash twenty twenty four? Counselor Pelletier, can I please get you to read order two two nine dash twenty twenty four?
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Pelletier, second by Counselor McGowan, any council discussion on? This is resetting rate at, or delinquent at, just some acts now.
The eight point five?
Yes.
That's the recommended number from the state, that is the maximum, yes.
Current here state?
Yes.
Any council? Down to the public. Back to council, all in favor? It's unanimous. Counselor McGowan, can I please get you to read order two thirty dash twenty twenty four?
Order number two thirty dash twenty twenty four, providing for interest rate for overpayment of taxes. It is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council set the F Y twenty five interest rate for overpayment of taxes at four point five percent. Note subsection five oh six A overpayment of taxes allows a municipality to reduce the interest rate for overpayment of taxes by four percentage points of what it charges for the interest rate of delinquent taxes.
I'll second that. Motion made by Counselor McGowan, second by Chairman Dorsey, any council discussion on? Down to the public, yes.
Apparently I'm speaking.
Yes, you are.
So, in case anybody's wondering what this is, if we have somebody, say, back when we were having a dispute with Brookfield and they paid their taxes ahead of time as the law requires if you're a large taxpayer. And then they ended up winning the appeal and we owed them money back. We set this rate because if we don't set the rate, it's the same rate that we would use for unpaid taxes. So it's, it's to our benefit to put that in there. I don't foresee that being an issue this year, but it's just good practice and good housekeeping to do it every year.
Anybody else? Public? Back to the council, all those in favor? What's your communication for committee for the October tenth, twenty twenty four council meeting will be Counselor May and Counselor Higgins. Chair Committee reports, do we have any? I don't believe we do. Two minutes of public comment, this is the time when the public go ahead and say anything to the houses that they wish to say, please address the council body as a whole. No, any individual houses, anybody from the public. Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Counselor McGowan, second by Counselor Mackin, all those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you.